It is six thirty and I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bentley, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here. Actually, I should say, this is Aaron Tuckfield, uh, coming remote from the township of Macomb, County of Macomb, State of Michigan.
Oh, Mr. Provazano?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here, from Macomb Township, the County of Macomb, State of Michigan. Do we still need to say that?
Mr. Spataforo?
My present, Macomb Township Meeting Chairs, Macomb Township, Macomb County, Michigan.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Bentley here.
Okay, everybody is here? Uh, approval of the April sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Does anybody have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before you vote on that, I'm gonna exclude myself from the vote since I wasn't at the last meeting. I would, uh, on behalf of myself, I did the same. I was not here either.
Okay, so Mr. Provazano and Mr. Shudo are going to exclude themselves because they were not present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Oliver?
Second. Seconded by Mr. Spataforo. To approve the minutes of April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Here. Yes.
Oh, all excluded, I'm sorry. And Mr. Shudo has been excluded as well. And Mr. Bentley, yes.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. Upon talking with Mr. Box, legal would like to, take Fremont PUD agreement and move it to another meeting. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're gonna exclude the Fremont PUD agreement. Anything else, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, with that amendment to the agenda, I think most will be accepted as read.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Provazano. Mr. Bentley?
Okay, Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, first item under new business, revised site plan, Saint Peter Lutheran Church, permanent parcel zero eight, zero eight, three zero zero, zero two seven, located on the northwest corner of Twenty-four Mile Road and Romeo Plain, Section Eight, Mary Grove awning petition. Mr. Bentley? Or Mr. Bentley, Mr. Box?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen here. For those of you who are in the audience, there's hard copies in the back book where you can get one of those and take a look. It's the same thing I'm gonna be sharing. So with regards to Saint Peter Church, um, a pretty simple revision of the site plan. They're adding some awnings and a couple of doorways. Uh, I believe it's door twenty-nine and door number four, I wanna say. You see that the rendering here, what these awnings are gonna look like. Uh, we worked with them to make sure there was some, enough clearance for ADA purposes for, uh, accessibility. Uh, from, there had been a room from the top of the ramp to where uh, the awning began, uh, for those with special needs to get through. And with that, all departments have reviewed these plans and are in approval of this revised site plan for Saint Peter Lutheran Church.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Is a petitioner in the audience? Would you please come up? Actually, over there. They state your name and your address.
This table, this table here. They have to, oh, here, so the commissioners can pick them up.
Oh, right there, okay, gotcha.
Good evening, I'm Wayne M. E., uh, actually a life for Macomb Township, Waldenberger, and I'm the vice president in Saint Peter, and I'm here representing the church.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to share, sir?
No, uh, I would appreciate approval, of course. It's been a long time in the process, and we've tried to honor all the commitments that were required of us, and we're anxious to move forward.
Okay, petitioners, any questions?
Just one quick one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The awnings, basically, for pedestrians, it's not gonna be covered vehicles, correct?
Okay, yes, very good, thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion for approval?
But you wanna go to public?
Well, is it, um, I don't necessarily have to have a public hearing, but is there anyone from the public that would like to share? Anyone? Okay, so now we can go for a motion. Is there anyone online, Mr. Box?
Uh, anyone who's online can raise their hand or, uh, the star nine to speak, if you're just on the phone. I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand at this time.
Okay, then, do we have a motion to approve this site plan for Saint Peter Church?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move on that motion.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Support by Tuckfield.
Okay, supported by, Mr. Provazano was in, yeah.
But he was longer than me, so.
Okay, so we'll give it to Mr. Tuckfield. Okay, Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Sir. Uh, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Next item, revised site plan, Twenty-three and Carr Development, permanent parcel zero eight, two two, two zero zero, zero zero five, zero eight, two two, two zero zero, zero one four, and zero eight, two two, two zero zero, zero one five, located on the southwest corner of Twenty-three Mile Road and Carr, Section Twenty-two, body escar petition. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. Um, again, I'm gonna share my screen here. See if everyone can see that now. Uh, this is a site plan that, as you mentioned, on the southeast, or excuse me, southwest corner of Twenty-three and Carr. Um, this is where the existing Buschamis is located. This is a site plan that you guys have seen previously and approved previously. The county road department is working on widening Twenty-three Mile, and as a result of that, they have asked that this development move its westerly driveway further west, um, as you see on the screen here. The one on the, your screen to the right is actually what the original plan looked like that you guys have already approved, and the one on the left is what they're proposing now. Uh, the only changes in this plan are simply shifting the driveway further west, and they had to shuffle around some parking spaces back to the east, uh, to accommodate that. All departments, uh, within the township here are in approval of this at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Petitioner, please state your name and your address, and if you have anything to share, please do it now.
My name is Bill Thompson from Leder Associates, one seven zero zero one nineteen Mall Road, Suite Three, Clinton Township, four eight. I guess the only thing with this is, is a little bit ironic. Uh, we had shared the site plan that you approved. We had had that in front of the local rail commission since, uh, May of two thousand nineteen, but they have obviously not commenting on site plans until they've been approved by the township. We said, have they approved the site plan? He says, oh, we'll be right back. And that's where we are.
Okay. Petitioners?
Just one question. How far did it move to the west?
A hundred and fifty.
I mean?
A hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one question, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Shudo, has everything been combined, all the parcels? Is everything ready to develop?
Um, I'm surprised that they read through the parcel. There was, this supposedly, this not combination would be approved from the site plan. So site plan's approved. I haven't seen the final combination yet, but it's submitted, it's done months ago.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, if I could.
Tuckfield?
Mr. Thompson, just two things. Uh, the first one, I'm, I'm operating remotely tonight, as, as you may have gathered, and your first comment with regards to the, to the county, I wasn't able to make that out. Is it possible for you to re-summarize that just briefly, so I can understand what you said?
We had submitted the site plan to the county back in, I think, May of two thousand nineteen, uh, but they wouldn't comment on it. Their policy is, they don't comment on site plans until they've been approved by the township. So when we sent them the approved site plan, they said, oh, we gotta move your driveway.
Nice, that's always, that's always helpful. And then the second thing is, I guess, just a riff on, on what Charlie was asking. Um, visual reference for the new driveway location, is it, if, if I'm reading this correctly, is it roughly where the driveway of the current residential, uh, unit that's on that property is? Is that roughly where it would be going?
Oh, it isn't. It's probably east.
So I believe there's also, like, a little drive on the, what I assume is the border between that residential unit and, and the corner lot. Is it, is it halfway between the driveway and that? Is it roughly on that line, just as a visual reference?
I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay. That'll be it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, one question, when, uh, the site plan was here the last time, uh, I know there was, uh, the, the, the development of the southeast corner, uh, there's a building shown there, uh, and that was still under review as far as, uh, the question as to what it might be developed. Is, has there been any further development on that?
No.
And, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion to approve the revised, revised site plan?
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Chair, I'll move, uh, to, um, recommend approval of revised site plan in Twenty-three and Carr, uh, development as presented and as recommended, our plan.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
And Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, last item, under new business, we have preliminary plan for Villa Toskana. Permanent parcel zero eight, three three, one five one, zero zero two, and zero eight, three three, one five one, zero zero three, and zero eight, three three, one five one, zero zero four, located on the east side of Romeo Plain Road, south of Twenty-one Mile. Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hardy. Um, again, I'm gonna share my screen here. So this is a site you guys have seen, uh, recently, some of you have actually seen this place. Uh, so this has been in recently for resoning, uh, some of these pieces. Uh, they did some lots of lit and combo, uh, work on this, and then, uh, for the units that you see on the east side and in the back of, of this, uh, and subdivision, uh, they did get some variances for the, those lots, because they're, they're a little bit too long in the width-to-depth ratio that you require. Um, so they've done a lot of work, uh, to get to this point. Uh, we've been through this internally with all our departments. This is a developer we've worked with quite a bit, uh, and we are, at this time, all of the parole departments are recommending approval of, uh, this new American plan.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, I'm assuming you're representing them as well?
I'm with you again.
Okay.
Bill Thompson from Leder Associates, one seven zero zero one nineteen Mall Road, Suite Three, Clinton Township. Like Mr. Box said, this has been in front of various commissions and boards. Uh, first was a result, because one of the strips of landing here was actually zone agricultural, yeah, they just pushed that around. Um, there's a lot of combination involved, and again, that is an advance until, so it's approved. And then the length-to-wid ratio on the lots on the eastern end, uh, there's about two hundred feet of flood plain left-hand in there, and that just made us too long for your ordinance, and we got the approval on that probably two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, um, there are left ends on the site. Uh, we worked with DEQ, which has already solved. Mr. Maybe curious, I saw some left-hand credits, but, uh, it'll all go, so we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Just one question, Mr. Thompson. Do we have a construction entrance, or are you gonna go right through sub, once it's paved?
Right over the main yard.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shudo.
Question.
Mr. Oliver?
When do they start, expect, uh, just, it'll start build this summer?
Anyone else? Anyone, Mr. Spataforo?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Thompson, if you know, um, and I may be premature with this question, but for, uh, units eight, nine, ten, and eleven, will the condominium documents, meaning the master deed and the exhibits, do you know if they're gonna have any type of a stated restriction on those units because of floodplain issues?
They will be clearly identified as left ends and floodplain. In the condo box.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spataforo. Anyone else? All right, this is one of those, the preliminary plan where we must have a public hearing. So is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak, or anyone online, Mr. Box?
Um, well, there's definitely not anyone online. Uh, there's only township employees and, uh, Mr. Thompson's staff, so I don't see anyone online that would be, uh, interested in this topic.
Okay.
In the audience.
Anyone in the audience that would like to come up and talk on this item? All right, well, we open the public hearing at six forty-seven, and we are gonna have a motion to close the public hearing at six forty-eight. Moved by Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Seconded in by Mr. Spataforo. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
And Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Close that.
Thank you.
Six forty. Six forty-eight.
I gotta tell you, this is the first time we've put in a tie since March twenty-second, twenty-twenty.
And you look very nice, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Thompson, we're not done. We still gotta vote on it, so.
Oh, you gotta vote.
We just closed the public horse.
Take that night off, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have.
Nobody did it, so.
No? All right, is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan for Villa Toskana?
If no further, uh, discussion, Mr. Chair, I will move to recommend approval of the preliminary plan of Villa Toskana as presented.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Bentley. All right, Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Bentley, yes. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Listen again, thank you for the mention. Good to see you, Mr. Thompson.
Nice tie.
All right, under old business bylaws, uh, who do we go to, Mr. Box? Do we go to you?
Um, well, I mean, I think you can open this up to anyone. You guys have, we've looked at this previously.
Okay.
These are your bylaws that, uh, as you control, so, uh, other than stating that, you know, we looked through it, Mr. Lloyd has made a number of comments that I'm sure you saw in the version in your packet. Um, I think it's, it's really something for you guys to discuss.
Okay. Commissioners?
If, if I could, uh, just briefly let you know that, um, so, Mr. Lloyd has gone through the original, uh, set of bylaws. He has, uh, reviewed every statute that's cited in there and made sure that the ordinance, or the, the bylaws as they appear now are in accordance with state law. Um, he is, he is not expecting the, the commission to vote on this today.
Okay.
We're looking for comments from anyone with respect to any additional, uh, revisions that are necessary, and then at the next meeting, it will be brought on for, uh, a vote.
Okay.
So, so we're really looking for, for input from the commissioners today.
Okay. And Mr. Bentley, let's start with you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, under, uh, would be F, uh, Article, uh, six, meetings, uh.
What page?
Yeah, well, which page? Um, I think it is page four.
Right.
Um, under six. And, uh, it says, Chair, uh, Chair closes public hearing. Uh, wanted clarification then, uh, at this, at this point, which we talked about a little bit, uh, earlier, about closing, uh, a public hearing, and, uh, whether or not we need to add, uh, a request for motion to close the public hearing after the chairman closes. Um, there's nothing that says we need to have a motion, uh, to close that, although in practice, we have been doing that, sometimes, sometimes not. So, uh, do we, do we have any clarification on that?
So you're looking to see whether or not there's something that comes, uh, between, uh, F six and F seven?
That's correct. Such as, or a continuation of that statement saying Chair closes public hearing and, uh, requests motion, or something of that nature, or, uh, must be, must be, uh, approved. Motion made, must be made and approved by commission, or something of that nature.
We will look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, under, under K, uh, voting.
Okay.
Um, it says voting on the, his second sentence, it says, voting shall ordinarily be voice vote, provided, uh, however that a roll call vote is required if requested by any commissioner or directed by the chair. Because of the pandemic, because of the situation we were in, and we were going virtual, is there any language here, or are we reverting back to this, uh, where it's just a voice vote? I mean, we've been taking, as related to tonight, a roll call vote on everything because we were directed to do so. Uh, do we need to state that here, that it is not ordinarily a voice vote, but it would be a roll call and voice vote? Or some combination thereof, the?
You know, you're really looking at whether or not we need to reverse those two clauses in the, in the bylaws. I, I, I think, since we're still having, um, for instance, Mr. Tuckfield appearing virtually, that it's still necessary to have a roll call vote, and, and I guess my only suggestion would be that perhaps after you, uh, open the meeting, that, that, that's gonna be stated on the record, that there will be a roll call vote until, until everyone is present in person. But the, the goal is to have, uh, the men, uh, the, the bylaws in, in a form that will serve you into the future, and, and God knows, we all are hoping to get past this pandemic sooner rather than later.
Sure, yeah.
But if, if, if the commissioners want us to re, reverse that language, we certainly can, or if you want us to add something.
Or add to it. I think there is a statement, um, regarding, uh, the meetings, uh, being sometimes virtual, you know, in case of an emergency or what it, whatever. We could have the same type of statement for voting, uh, needs to be roll call vote during those same situations.
Certainly.
Because if this happens again, or continues to happen, we have a change of personnel and such, um, that would be, uh, that would be maintained. It's something we've learned, and, uh, and then would be recorded as such.
Sure.
And, and I like the idea of a roll call vote.
Okay.
Whether we're live and we have an audience, or we're virtual. I think sometimes, uh, the yea or nay voice votes can be mixed up, you know, as far as somebody doing the minutes. So could we do, uh, roll call vote or, uh, voice vote, so we have that, that leeway?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could add just one thing, um, and this might apply to what Mr. Bentley is referring to as well. I, I believe it's the discretion of the chair. I mean, it, it, any member can request a roll call vote, but if you're the chair and, and you think we should do roll call votes on any, uh, even if we're in person, under this language, I think you're able to say that at any given time. We want all, all votes roll call, and that, that would be your prerogative.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield.
Chairman, I agree with you. I think we'd kind of like to roll call vote, because this way, we know exactly who's saying yea and nay. I mean, there, there are times when you hear it under voice, and since we started roll call votes, I think it makes it easier for everyone to go down from the person making the agenda, or the motion to the, to second, and, and you hear what he's, I, I'd like the idea of roll call votes all the time. I don't know if we can add that to it, or?
I, you know, I, I, I think this, this hard thing might be to, to see what the consensus is amongst the commissioners, and if, if there's a motion that we, we, you know, amend this to add that all votes will be taken by roll call, then we'll just rewrite this one sentence to provide that all votes will be by roll call.
And it's not a big deal, right?
No, no.
Mr. Spataforo?
Um, I'll take the position, um, that Mr. Lloyd's office is, you know, set forth and stated by Mr., uh, Orlando, that the language currently in Article six K is fine as is. Um, it's been my experience in the past and also reading Robert's Rules of Orders, the chair has a discretion. So in this case, Mr. Hardy, you have the discretion if you want to have all the votes in a meeting called like that, because at some point in the future, you may not be the chair.
Right.
And others may do it. Uh, my own opinion is, I like the voice vote unless I do hear an opposite nay, and then, having served as a chair of a panel in the past, then I would say, uh, I wanna, you know, call a roll vote, just to clarify, but if it's all unanimous, you know, I think a voice vote is sufficient, but nonetheless, you as the chair have the prerogative to do it, and I don't think there's any, uh, reason to have to revise this language as, as presented.
Okay. Mr. Oliver, what do you think?
Same thing. I, I always felt the chair kind of runs the meeting, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of latitude you got there, and, and that's part of it right there. And, and I agree with you, it's, it, it is good to have, uh, yes or no, because especially with these masks on now.
Right.
Yea or nay can get blurred. So, no, I, I think roll call's great, and, and again, it's your call.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
So, um, I, I would, uh, I would again ask, was there a state requirement or a township requirement that, uh, forced us to have the roll call votes? Was that, uh, was that instruction when it was given, uh, a requirement by the state, or was that a requirement by the township?
I, I can't answer that. I'm not, not sure.
Um, 'cause I think we're, we're all told at the same time, oh, no, we must have a, we must have roll call votes.
Certainly, when, when, when you went virtual, you, you had to, there's just, there's just no way yays or nays would come through the screen.
Yeah, I think that was part of the, when the governor's executive orders allowed for public meetings to go virtual, that was a requirement by the state to, to be roll called. public meetings to go virtual, that was a requirement by the state to do roll call vote.
Okay.
So, that pertained to, that, you know, current conditions, not forever moving forward, do you have to have a roll call vote?
So, with that, Mr. Box, as it states here, provided however that a roll call vote is required if requested by any commissioner or directed by the chair or by state mandate, you know, for virtual meetings could be added. And then I think we're set. And then that leaves, certainly, it always was for the discretion of the chair, or any one of us could have asked for it.
Sure.
And I think that keeps, allows the flexibility, but also keeps in mind the, when we're in a virtual meeting, because if it continues, we would do that.
I probably agree with you there. I think the language, it allows you, as the chair, I think, a flexibility. But I remember you used to say, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Anybody say nay. So, there was.
There was a time we did that, yeah.
There was a time when you say, all in favor, say aye. Everybody would say aye.
Yeah.
But they informed us, does anybody say nay? And when we didn't hear it.
Yeah.
And if we heard it, then we looked to make sure there wasn't, you know, more than three.
Right.
You know, or four. And so, either way, but you're the captain. You call it.
Oh, thanks. All right. And Mr. Chuda, we heard from you. Mr. Tuckfield, did you want to share anything else?
I would just say that I think it makes sense to leave flexibility with the chairperson. I know I've done this elsewhere, and there are times when you need the flexibility. I think this is a good spot. The only other thing that I would add is with regards to roll call votes, there's certainly a time for them. I think when we're in person and it's a contentious issue, or you're not sure, you know, we've done this before, when we know there's going to be disagreement, yet someone requests a roll call vote right off the top, or you can request a roll call vote on something you want to hark back into. But I will say that one of the things that I learned when I was secretary was that roll call votes also sometimes have a hazard that should be, you should be aware of too. And I remember two specific votes where I realized after the vote that the order with which the names were called had an effect on how the vote went. And that was kind of eye opening to me, and that would be the only reason that I would caution against all votes being roll call. Not to say that they're not good, and the other comments we've had are pertinent, you know, with masks on, it's hard to tell, with digital and whatnot. But I've literally seen votes, for good or for bad, that were different specifically because of the order that they were called in. And so, I would, that would only be my only caution against mandating all of them. There is opposing.
Mr. Orlando?
We do both.
Absolutely.
We need it. Okay.
That's all.
Right. It's up to your discretion. You can run the meeting however you want.
Anybody else with the?
Just regarding that?
With the bylaws, no?
Yes, one more.
Okay.
Or maybe two.
Okay.
Another comment, under L, Agenda. And I was going through the order. One thing that was missing, I don't know if it's required but put here, but we don't have a space for the County Board of Trustees liaison update. And we normally have that in our minutes. And it's mandated by the same ordinance or the same bylaw. And so, it should have a position or a location there between, I believe, between nine, which is Commissioner Comment, and ten, ZBA Liaison Update.
Yeah, that's something I was going to find out as well, people with your agenda for tonight. Number ten, the Township Board of Trustees Liaison Update. As long as I, you know, here that I've been here, that's been on the agenda every time. And I did notice as well that it doesn't match this. So, I guess my thought would be either you insert that in there, or in number ten, where it says, you know, ZBA Liaison Update, you could just change that to Liaison Update. That would apply to both ZBA Liaison and Board Liaison. Either way, I think we'd be fine. But it's something that we have had on the agenda every time. And you're right, it spells out, that's a position on the board, on the planning commission, is that liaison. So, giving them an opportunity to reach out to the board.
Boy, that correction.
Okay. And my only other comment was under Article, Article Eight, Absences, Removals, and Resignations.
What page is that?
That's.
Page seven.
I think it's the last page, page seven. Sorry. And it's top, it's under A, Absences. And I just wanted to clarify about absences, failure to make the notification, at least this is the second sentence, failure to make the notification at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will result in an unexcused absence. And that's notifying the chair, I guess. Do we want to change that? Do we want to keep that? Is that a mandatory 24 hour thing? Because, I mean, sometimes there's emergencies that come up or less than 24 hours. Do we need to, do we need to change that language or add to it? Or does this give us no recourse? If it's not 24 hours prior to before?
No, no. You know, I think what we want to keep in mind is that, you know, these are your bylaws.
Yes.
And if we need to add some flexibility in here, then you need to give us a suggestion, and we'll build it in there.
Just to follow up on, and that's, truly, Mr. Bentley, it was discussed, any of us could be ready for a board meeting, and at any time, something could happen, and we'd have to just say aye, I think. So, we should probably put it in there, a reasonable time period to notify the chair or if, or the secretary or another board member, so they can notify the chair. And I would, if you're going to put a time thing, I maybe would just leave it reasonable. You know, and that would give us all flexibility because nobody knows exactly if you're going to be here for the next minute, you know? I mean, it's way like this.
Yeah.
So, we really, you know, to really confine it to that 24, you know?
Right, right.
Maybe it's a little bit, a little bit heavy, but we could just, a reasonable time.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll just add to that real briefly if I could. If I talk over your.
And, you know, there's an accident on the expressway, and he's stuck in traffic. I mean, it's never going to be 24 hours. So, go ahead, Mr. Tuck.
I was just going to say, there's one additional situation, you know, in the last five years on the ZBA, we had a member that I sent a letter to the board requesting their removal from the ZBA. And we requested the member's removal from the ZBA because he had failed to make three meetings. Now, of those three meetings, he actually notified me as the chair prior to those meetings. However, the notification was not satisfactory or for satisfactory reasons. And we were able to make the request on my judgment as the chair, that he had not provided reasonable notification. And he provided in 24 hours, but we did not feel like it was a reasonable reason. And so, we did not accept it. So, I would also say that if we limit it to as time being the only specification as to it being reasonable, also takes away necessary flexibility. Because if we say that's the case, then it doesn't matter what the reason is. As long as they do it within 24 hours, we're saying it's reasonable, which I think takes away from perhaps some of the actual circumstances where it may be needed to be used.
Okay. Anyone else? You get that, Mr. Orlando?
Pardon me?
You get all that?
I did.
Okay.
Now, what do we have to do? Do we have to create that language? Or is that something that you'll create that's legal and?
Yeah, we will, I'm taking notes as to what sections you're requesting that we revise. And then, a new red line version will be circulated to the board members in advance of that meeting.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share about the bylaws?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I had two things I wanted to make some comments on.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuck.
The first one is with regards to, let's see what article this is, Article Six, Section I, that'll be on Page Four regarding minutes. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Orlando and Mr. Lloyd review our minutes process and make sure we are maintaining, we're maintaining our restrictions as spelled out here correctly. I know there's been times when we haven't been able to vote on minutes for corrections and whatnot. I just want to make sure we're not putting something into our bylaws we haven't been able to maintain. That was the first thing that I wanted to mention. And then, the second thing, and maybe is a little bit more broad based, Article, I think it's the same article, let me double check. The Article Six, Section Q, says, "All commission meetings shall generally follow Robert's Rules of Order or the chair's discretion as he decides appropriate to promote and provide proper due process." I believe in a lot of chair discretion if we can help it. But this is something that's been, I thought about it before, we've never really brought it up. It seems kind of strange to me that we use Robert's rules, sort of, but not really. And I know when Mr. Lloyd came in, there was a couple of times where he would say, you know, as, Robert's rules would say X. And I wonder if it might make more sense to either abide by Robert's rules or not mention it in the first place, but maybe not do as much of a hybrid. I'm not sure if it makes sense, but I wonder if it should be looked into to maybe, maybe hold a little bit closer to it, or say, we're operating by Robert's rules unless the chair decides to suspend them for some other reason, or something of that nature, so that it gives us more of a framework. Because I know, and this is the case on the ZBA, I've never really looked into Robert's rules. I've operated the meeting based on how I've seen the meeting operated because I don't really feel like I'm required to, but we always have it in there like, maybe we operate by Robert's rules, but we don't know. So, I guess that would be more of a question, I should have asked this before the last one, just your and Mr. Lloyd's opinion on, is that an appropriate stance? Or should we go further in one direction or the other?
We can certainly take a look at that for you.
And that would be all my questions.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? There is no action being taken, so let's move on. Where are we at here? Public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone, obviously, there's no one in the audience recording. Is there anyone online that would like to speak?
I believe both of the attendees online are conference staff.
Okay, then we'll move on to commissioners' comments. Commissioners? Anyone?
I just had a statement, and maybe I had some questions regarding the legal aspect. For the second time this week, I found medical marijuana, a whole packet full in my front yard, you know, in my, near my ditch. Full. And it was, I don't know, it was softies, you know, and it was mango and very enticing packaging. Read the information on it, and it just said it was produced in a, I forget the term, the medical marijuana, you know, it was a legal.
Facility?
Facility, but it did not identify a location, a manufacturer, who was the provider or caregiver, however that terminology is. So, there was no way to trace it, no way to find out, okay, how did that prescription supposedly get in my front yard? This is the second time. You know, the first time it was like a cigar case full of, you know, marijuana. And it's disturbing to me. I don't, I don't find that kind of prescription drug on my front yard, but this has happened now a couple of times. And I'm not sure how much more it'll continue once the weather gets nice. But I'm wondering if there is any legal requirement that these producers or caregivers, as we talked about in the ordinance, I couldn't remember, and I didn't check, whether or not they are required to put where they are producing them, so that it could be traced back. And they be, you know, checked whether or not, you know, where did this? There wasn't even any identification as to who the prescription was for. So, there was no way to trace it. How are they getting this? How are they getting access to medical marijuana? And so, it led me to believe that there are very little restrictions, very little controls, and this is just another way to have recreational marijuana. And we as a community have not, have not allowed that. So, what can we do?
Well, as a community, you haven't allowed the growth, production, transportation, or dispensaries to be set up within your borders. However, there's still recreational use that's been legislated and can be done. So?
Now, it said it was medical marijuana.
Okay.
So, I put it in that category.
Okay.
And then wondered, okay, why, like every other drug, it has to include words, you know, who manufactured it and, you know, where?
And who the patient is, sure.
Exactly.
Sure.
Is that a requirement, a state requirement, or?
You know, unfortunately, that was Mr. Tomlinson's Bailey Wick. And I can certainly pass this on to him and let him know that this concern was raised at the meeting and that the packages that were found contained very little in terms of any description as to where it came from or where it was supposed to be going to, and see if that is in compliance with the state law. And we can provide a response for you at the next meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Oh, Mr. Robin, done? Mr. Allen? Okay. Mr. Tuckfield, what do you think?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, I can't disappoint you too many meetings in a row without speaking.
I saved you for last on purpose.
I appreciate it. I had three things. First thing, Mr. Box, I was talking to somebody, and they were asking me about how the Garfield Road is doing between 22 and 23 mile. They had heard a bunch of various stories about its status. Is it possible for you to give a brief update on where that is and what its status is?
Sure. So, we are working with the road department on extending Garfield all the way from 22 to 25. At this time, we're still working with a few of the property owners to get official right of way needed to the county. And that, I think, is the case still in the section between 22 and 23. There's still some property to be acquired. But we are working towards that. I think we're getting closer every time we meet. So, fingers crossed that will happen in the future.
So, principally, it's, right now, it's waiting on right of ways to be acquired.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Second thing was just to follow up, also to Mr. Box. And I know we brought this up a little while ago, but I just want to check. I had inquired with regards to medical massage uses within the township. Have we been able to look into that at all? Do we have any sort of update on that? As far as any investigation to that?
I don't have an update for you at this time, no.
Okay, very good. And then, the last thing that I had was with regards to the item, one of the first items we had, the revised site plan, where we looked at the awnings. Just a thought that maybe it makes sense to see if we can fit those into an administrative approval process. Obviously, I think it makes sense to have the site plans come before the planning commission. But maybe there's some ability, if it's within a certain square footage, or if it's within a certain projection, to help some of those businesses. And, you know, we've seen it at St. Peter's a couple of times. Maybe save them a few steps in the process for something that, that isn't really a substantial change to. Maybe save them a few steps in the process for something that, that isn't really a substantial change to the, to the, to the process. So just something to keep in mind as, as you're going through, maybe another, maybe another bullet point to put on the list, maybe simplify our, our ordinance. And I like seeing things. I like keeping a handle on it. There's things I think are important. But, but if possible, I think it's always good to try to keep some of those things in, in, in the administration portion and shorten the, the timeline necessary for, for residents and businesses to get approval. So just a thought that maybe we want to consider that. And that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. All right. If there's no one else, we will move to the Compton Township Board of Trustees liaison. Mr.?
Oliver. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. Again, the board did, did approve the updated marijuana ordinance that we seen at our planning commission. So that's, I think it took effect, ten, within effect immediately or what's that?
Well, it takes effect seven days after it's advertised and then it figures.
Okay.
When you guys approved it on Wednesday, I'm not sure what day it got advertised, it seems like seven days from that moment.
Thanks. As soon as you take it back. So hopefully we'll get some, a little bit out of control on a few problems we run into. Second, which is really something here, we had a family that's lived in this community for years. They donated fourteen and a half acres. Not a little, that's not a little land, that's a lot of property. Bringing clarity to the community with very little to no restrictions. They want their name, they want on the park and a few little things. And so that, that was huge for something to be that generous, donating its property. We're going to use it for a park. We don't, we got a lot of ideas, but we're not quite ready to announce what it's going to be used for. But so that, that was some, I, that was some pretty substantial news to get. And good news because it's in the south end of the township. It's at Romeo Plank in almost a hall road. And now a lot of people probably would recognize the building. There's a big white barn on the west side of the road. It's, it's the property directly behind it. So I think if anyone runs Romeo Plank, they would recognize it.
And near Hall Road.
Yeah, just, yeah, almost a hall road. So then, I think them retail center, they, they back up to it. Okay, so. Right across from Goldies, everyone knows who Goldies is. So it's right across from there. So it's a beautiful piece of property. Mr. Box, you, you've been involved in it. If you want to add something to it, go ahead. Because that, I thought that was pretty good that a family would do that over this community.
Yeah, I think it's actually a little further north than, than, I guess, honestly, just north of 22 mile.
No, I, I think it's, the property is where that big white barn is. It's behind it. It's on the west side of Romeo Plank.
No, it's. Hi, everybody. How are you? A little late to the meeting. It, it, it actually, respectfully, Mr. Oliver, it actually is north of 22 mile road, excuse me, on the west side, north of 22 mile road. Yep, yeah. It's, it's there and it, there, there's like a wetland piece directly across the street. I'm actually closing on it. I did, I did the transaction, so. No, no problem. So that's where it's located.
But I just wanted to make sure the board knew that we have intentions for a park there and stuff. It'd be nice, it'd be nice. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, it's my turn next. I was just going to ask Mr. Oliver a question on that. Do we, we have multiple pieces of property that, that have been tentatively slated for parkland around the township, including I think the, the Eli, Eli Whitney Park over there at 24 and, 24 and Card. Do we have any update on those? Obviously with, with a new administration, things can change. Is there any official change in stance on those or is, are we pretty much in the same situation we were last time?
There's no official change on them, but any, you know, they're, they're in the process. I will tell you that much right now. We haven't changed any plans or anything on that parks. We got 26 mile road that's still there and I think we closed it for winter. Now we've opened it. We get, we're in the process of the Whitney Park and that's in process.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, sorry, sorry for interrupting as you're about to hand it to me.
That's okay. You're the ZBI, ZBA liaison. So go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield, chair with us.
Uh, yes, on, on the ZBA front, we've been relatively busy for us the last few meetings. Seems like things have picked up this year from last year. We've steadily had at least two or three items every meeting. Nothing remarkable to note from last meeting or, or the next meeting that I would bring up here. At the last meeting, I generally have the vice chair try to chair one meeting a year. Mr. DeCosta chaired his meeting last, last meeting, did a good job, not surprisingly. I don't know if you guys have ever watched the ZBA, but we've, we're fortunate to have some pretty solid members on there. Been happy working with everybody over there and things are, things are rolling along. I think we're doing pretty good over there.
Okay, good. All right. Planning Department items.
I have nothing for you this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Box. Motion to adjourn. So moved by Mr. Shudo. And supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
I will. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley. Okay. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Spurfor?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is 7:27. Good night, everyone.
I'll say yes too.
Oh, did you forget Mr. Provozano?
He's got the longest name.
Mr. Provozano?
Yes.
All right, now we got her, we got her now.
Sorry. I can type one letter.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.